Drive case play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, liberating justice for all.
Did you please leave this on her? Everyone would please bother that.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the beautiful weather that you've been giving us recently. And we just pray that you watch over the activities of the meeting tonight, that they may be pleasing to you and that we can take care of the business at hand. Your name is heard. Amen.
Okay, so we'll have the reading of the approval of minutes from March first meeting.
Motion to approve this coming in.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Hack. Discussion on favor of the March first minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, changes, questions?
Motion to approve this presented.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
And second by Pillar. Discussion. All favor of the approval of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm thinking that by six o'clock, we do have the hearing, the condemnation hearing set for six o'clock. And if we are still in discussion, we'll interrupt where we're at in the agenda and go from there. If we're down on our agenda, we will proceed at six. Five A Engineers Report. Monty said Jared is available if we need him, but unless anybody has any specific issues or questions for engineering, we'll probably leave him alone on vacation and not interrupt him.
With us cracks, I mean, how has these project roads been looking?
Good.
I think?
Yeah.
We're just kind of curious.
Yeah, no surprises. Everything's looking good from the weather tracking.
Right.
And did Jared reach out to you guys to ultimately make some additional recommendations on the water building next door in terms of functionality or anything? Have a finalization of the plans?
Other than the meetings were the design meetings part of it.
I didn't know if we had action items hanging off there.
Yeah, unless Ryan, it's still good, but I haven't.
Dave on that way northeast corner for the up there by the Land Board Trailer area. Is the road heaving and pushing up as bad as winter has in the past?
Not as bad in the years past, but it's still getting that long, but it'll settle back down.
Is the asphalt maintaining?
It's maintaining like it did before. If Jared makes it up before the weather gets a little warm, I'll take him up and drive. The work that was done did help us all.
Good?
Good.
Moving now to six A Local Permit Saint Martin's Church. And then B, we have permit reduced comment for Knights of Columbus Palm Sunday Breakfast.
Motion to approve both.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we need to wait till six o'clock?
Tomorrow.
Oh, Laura, this can come. Okay, then we need to wait. All right, we'll move down to nine to reports. Then water sewer.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Streets.
Just a few things. We've been sweeping. We've been cracks cleared, of course, a nice out. So far, winter's been good, so we're, I'm assuming ahead of progress on some of our spring items?
Yeah, yeah, crack sealing is going well. Pretty much all the streets have been swept at least once.
Have we swept off a lot of crack seal? Or is that pretty?
No, some that we've sealed or whatever we have in touch with. We'll let that here long before we go back on that.
But I mean the crack seal from the project?
The chips.
Excuse me.
Yeah, there's still loose chips and they've been in the gutter, whatever. It's hard to get them all in one season or whatever. That's sweeping, just can't pick up that much, but.
And then all the gutters, last I talked to Dave, were there to go, nothing's froze in there?
Nothing's froze. We're getting it put in the clean out and all, so.
The only thing I didn't ask about is what about the one over by Moses Park? That one that we, Moses Park by the school? Yeah, Moses Park.
Yeah.
How has that been?
That's looking good.
Is it? So maybe?
They're not draining.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's no moisture, so. No moisture, no how it's gonna drain or whatever, but it's all been swept, so any moisture, moisture's gone and swollen.
I got a question. Those rocks that's split down on the pavement? Come up on the, right next to our house, that stuff's still coming up there. You can't even turn on it. When you turn on it, all those rocks come up.
And Mr. Free, and then when they do that chip seal project, it is meant to have excessive, then it's supposed to. Some of it wears in and a lot of it we clean, we sweep up.
So. They were gone for the target coming from my house, so look at.
Okay, Dave, you got a lot to take together. Thank you.
Outside of that, again, ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Spring stuff.
Maybe not ahead of schedule, but we started way earlier than a year's past, just because of the weather.
Looked like you used much faster dissolving toilet paper, too.
Yeah, it's worked it well this year.
It is working well.
And then one more question. A lot of people are having, if you've noticed, when is spring cleanup week? Can we start telling people when that's gonna be?
It's not May.
It's usually in May, but.
It'll be.
A lot of questions.
God, I want to say it's the third through the seventh, but it's right after the spring moment, or whatever that weekend is.
It just feels like it should be happening already because it's a myself.
It isn't.
I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not, it sounds kind of right.
It would be the week after the one.
Yeah, it's the week after the one.
Well, they get all posted on that.
Okay, because I have a lot of questions.
A lot of people that stop here over there?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, anything else for Jason or Dave? Finance, bus and library. So our new trans event is here. The decals are on it. And then we did approve of cameras in the bus and stuff that flashed here. That'd be a project, I guess, to, to be starting to, I guess, install those. And then on the, I guess, at the library side, Oceana. Our plan is to be all done in a month. So then I guess there's gonna be a job. Job, I guess. A job posting there. So then that's besides that, if it's all that. Any questions for Casey? All right, thanks. Police Spider.
Been reported that the new vehicle came into the police department on fifth of March. And Jim is working on scheduling a removal and transfer of equipment from the 2015 to the new one. And that would be it?
We still do the decal, I jam, right?
They'll say it's signed through.
Signed through.
Thank you. Steve CD Buster.
Not much other than I've been out at the office for a week and a half.
Slacking?
Due to my bad wing.
Should get ready for golf season.
Yep.
Okay, thanks Buster. I'll just briefly report that last, last meeting we met, we talked about Commerce Department and items that we had for wish lists type things for any types of projects or studies, items that we would like to see help from the state on. Obviously, we don't have to just hand out money, but they want to help with different, you know, if we have anything at hand that needs to be dealt with outside of what the legislature's dealing with now, but today, piggybacking off that, today, we had a coal counties conversion meeting. Buster was there, Dan was there. We had Jeff Simon from Western Energy Energy. Vlad Erickson, State Attorney from McLean County. All the Lieutenant Governor was online with us, Jason Moore. It was a nice meeting. We had really good representation. And now it is mostly an update on what's happening in the industry with legislation, coal impacts that are, that are happening to Oliver, McLean and Mercer Counties. Obviously, you know, it's not a secret what's, what's been happening and the way things are being dealt with right now. But one of the big concerns, and you know, I talked about is that, you know, the one thing I would ask for the state, the Department of Commerce to help us maybe is to do a study. Monty and I briefly touched base on it with our budget. I know they're looking at different scenarios in our energy industry with obviously GRE has been in the front page all over the place. DGC, there's questions on what's gonna be happening there with converting over to possible. If it's gonna continue to be a coal-fired facility or some natural gas eventually. Leland Olds, possibly moving one unit offline by twenty-five and then another unit by two thousand thirty. You know, what's, what's happening to our, our backyard? This year, we're receiving about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for coal service and conversion. Our sales tax, our property tax brings in three hundred and seventy-five thousand. You know, if we were to, if we were to do a budget analysis today based on two thousand twenty-five or two thousand thirty budget and income forecast, what, what does that look like? What does, what does our community have to start to give up for services? Or what does this board have to do for increases in fees, property tax? Some way to start offsetting those things? Two thousand twenty-five, two thousand thirty might be too late to start doing any of that stuff. It might need to start this coming fall when we start to do our next budget round. So I think that's one thing I, I would like to get some assistance from the Commerce Department is forecasting how we deal with our budget. Looking at what we have in the bank, what we have for projects, what our communities are also pay, already paying for assessments. You know, how far can we push our citizens with property tax? Nobody wants that, but how do you pay for all these services when you remove six hundred and thirty thousand dollars? And who knows what the next executive order is gonna be from Washington DC? It's already impacting a lot of jobs, you know, the pipelines, oil, you know, coal being so under attack, it could happen sooner than, than we, we think. But I think we really need to start looking at that because I don't want to be caught with our hands down. And it could, you know, it's, it's, I think it could be a really good tool for us to like a mock exercise of doing the budget. Monty ran some numbers and looking at what we've done since, you know, two thousand seventeen and we forecasted and tried to do a little bit for the future. You know, it's probably not a bad idea to start going down that road, but anyhow, it was. It's an eye-opener and I really truly think that we have a lot of people in our own community that don't know or understand or don't want to don't really want to admit to how bad policy could be. So if no one else has any objections, I think I'd like to, to Monty communicate with the State Department of Congress and bring that out. Our next MCD meeting is the twenty-fifth Buster of March, is that right, Dan? Okay, so, and that's where the Commerce Department is coming back to our next MCD meeting. Remember, that's Mercer County Economic Development. To our next meeting and asking us, okay, what is it, what are you guys looking for? What kind of help do we, do we have or are you looking for? So if that's okay, I think we'll move forward with that plan to start diving into that a little bit more in depth. You know, there's a lot of things that may, may have to happen in our community. There might be a lot of services that have to be abbreviated somehow. So Buster, you have a question?
The thing that we don't know, for instance, is I don't think we have a very good handle on how many jobs are tied locally to this industry. I'm not sure what our population is. You know, say it's three grand, you know, are fifty percent of our local jobs tied to the coal industry? And if there are fifty percent of them, that's fifteen hundred people. Well, there wouldn't be that many because there's kids, but I mean, you run all those factors kind of backwards and whatever, and you see. For instance, I know that in talking with one of the coal county commissioners or members of the coal county board there, the superintendent over at Washburn ran some numbers just on their kids in school. And they would easily lose forty kids. And right now, that's ten thousand kids, is what they're paying.
Ten thousand, that was a student.
That's just on food, that's just on tuition. That doesn't have anything to do with the drop in severance, emergency severance. You know, if those people leave town, you know, those, I mean, the production is not gonna be there. And so, you know, you're, it, it has the trickle effect. I think that's the part that people do not understand is the trickle effect that it would have on the economy, you know? And then, you know, again, it goes back to this, how do you keep your services? How do you keep your hospital going? How do you keep everything going? And do we want, we don't necessarily want optimization of people. We're gonna have CNN migration of people. And what can we do? You know, some of the things that we had talked about at the last MCD meeting was is there a way we could recruit, we could recruit? Some of the people, for instance, from the West Coast that are, have been going through some bad times out there and what have you, you know? Look at a little bit of diversification in terms of where things are at. Who knows what's gonna happen with the projections of it. What's gonna happen with the fossil fuel industry? And you know, five years down the road, it's not that far down the road anymore. And twenty seven years either. I mean, if both those, if Leland Olds is off, why totally? And everybody knows that once the plant goes offline, it shuts down, it'll never come back. Personal nature. So I think it's, you know, part of my thing is I'm glad that the coal converting county spokes are really taking a lead on this because this is an issue, this is an issue across all three of our counties. Oliver and Mercer and McLean, you know? And thank God, we have people like Vlad Erickson and even John has great knowledge of coal preservation stuff from the county perspective and the historical perspective. That's the part that, and it's, it's kind of eye-opening when you sit and listen to some of those guys talk and what's happening with the industry.
Yeah, and even the representative from Kelly Armstrong's office that was there, I think he was, his eyes were open pretty wide a little bit to listen to some of the numbers from the schools and the lead from center, you know, seventy percent of their kids, their family, that are in the school, their families are tied to the energy industry some, some way. That's, that's, you know, a lot of, a lot of jobs. Center doesn't want to be the next handlework, you know?
Part of it is, I think that, you know, we need to try to do some planning, but you know, key to that is we have to get people to the table. You know, we can't, you know, you can't have people just sitting in the background thinking, you know, the boss is gonna do it, you know?
And that's another reason why Buster, I think, doing an exercise like this and making it clear to our community what we're looking at, will give people a little bit more of an eye-opener and say, wow, it's, things are, you know, looks pretty nice outside today. You know, the streets are in great shape today. What's it gonna look like in twenty years? I recommend you watch for Dan's article in the paper, I'm sure you'll just, are you gonna do something this week on today's meeting?
The CCC, yes.
Yeah, okay. There's a lot of information there. We could have been there for two days, actually, and still listening to people, so. Anyhow, that's, that's where, that's what I'm gonna take to the Commerce Department people. With your blessing, obviously. All right, I think we're gonna move to the condemnation hearing that we have a little before six. Treasuries are here and so is Lauren Leest, who did our reporting. So at this time, we need to close our regular meeting.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we will have our condemnation meeting at this time. Anyone wanna speak in favor or opposition to the condemnation of the properties? Lauren, can you tell us a little bit about?
Yeah. I don't have a copy of the document, I remember quite well.
And here's some photos, your photos, and we do have your, we do have your report here, too.
Well, there's a number of facets involved in this. If you review the photos, obviously, that's a shot of the front porch, which basically could collapse at any given point in time. It's all lotted out. The shingles are all bad. The windows are bad. And this is, and first of all, I'm not trying to beat these guys up, I'm not saying, this is.
Who's the operator is that?
I. I think I see it from here. So all the trees and everything were all cleaned up. I've been trying to get a contractor to shingle the place, but. You've deepened my room, just let me finish.
I want to know who sent you there to look at this property.
The city. The city notified you guys, from what I understood.
No. We got a copy of this letter, that's all we got. So nobody notified us for nothing. You signed for the letter. So we signed for the one that we got the other day.
I have seeing issues with a lot of my readers, so what does this tell me?
The initial notice and order regarding the condemnation was signed for on December sixteenth.
By who?
Laurie A. Parisian.
We never thought.
Yes, if I did sign first, I could have been with Matt's mail.
Well, like I said, I, I'm.
Go ahead, give me your order.
Okay, because, yes, well, I mean, when I saw the property, and these are the photos from that period at the time, the shingles were, you know, it looks better. I didn't have access to the inside, but when I, but the windows were in bad shape. There, there was debris blowing off the roof, shingles on the street. And a large of my concern was the proximity to the school is relevant to this because there's a couple hundred kids a day walk right by that property. And kids have a tendency to be kind of curious, and we got kind of a overlooking spooky property thing going on there. And which concerned me because if you get up on that porch, that could easily collapse. There's debris flying off the roof that could hurt somebody in a high wind situation. Whatever, to me, from what I could ascertain on the entire property, it hadn't not been lived in sometime. I don't know it without some major work, and I'm not saying that can't be done, but it would take a lot of work to make that livable. Because after the period of time now that's gone by, if you decide to renovate this, it's gonna have to be inspected and go out up to code standards. So I guess my question would be, and it's really not my position to make the question, but you know, if you're, if they're willing to do that, I'm not saying that, but I don't see how you could possibly fix this, and this is just my opinion, into a saleable property and make, and get your money back. So like I said, the photos, I can pretty much speak for themselves. Like I said, I don't know whether they cleaned the trees up or not, but there was evidence of animals written around and digging around the buildings and things like that. It's just, and like I said, a big part of it in my mind was the location as well. Because, you know, New York City, when you're that close to all those kids and, you know, I haven't seen the inside, but if that roof isn't leaking, I would be amazed. So there's gonna be some damage inside and stuff because there's no shingles on the house. Do I need to go beyond that, or what would you like to hear?
No, if that's, if that's basically encompasses your report, I suppose.
Yeah, more or less, so. No.
Matt?
Well, I can tell you one thing is if you are on my property, I will have you trespass corrected. It's a private residence and private property, no matter who says so. I still making payments on my house. The inside's fine. I've been in there. I was just on the porch before I came here. That front socket blew off in a high wind. I have a picture here of the house cleaned up. And I've been working with, trying to work with a contractor to come and shingle the roof, but most of them want to do it because of how steep it is. I've been trying for several years and this is my first time in Hazen since the pandemic started because Basin said, do not travel, do not, do not, do not leave your house, do not leave town, and that's where I've been in Manheim. Other than going to work, I've been not able to come there. So we're addressing the situation, but the shingles, you know, I'll be trying. I've tried five different contractors this last year, but none of them would take work because of COVID. They couldn't get supplies. And I'm gonna try again this spring, see if I can get someone to address the roof.
That house and that leaking inside. And that portal, give anybody a hundred dollars right now to go push on it and see if it moves, and then it don't. So there's no, if somebody says it's gonna fall in, it's bull crap. Because I was up there and I, I cut all those trees down and I jerked on that, that deck he's talking about. That thing don't even butt. So I don't know, I don't know where he's coming up with.
So you're going to be a liar?
Yes, I am.
Well, you're wrong, my friend.
Well, I'll take you there right now. You go push on it, see if you can. Gentlemen, that's the, guys, that's the discussion that if you want to have outside this room, you can, but not right now, please. So Matt, what's your plan other than the shingles? And by the way, my son worked on a shingle crew last summer. They did three houses a week.
Yeah, I know, but I'm talking for how steep my front of my house.
I was just saying the COVID issue you're talking about. They were shingling all summer.
The two guys that I tried at the beginning said they didn't have a crew. And by the time I got done working at the end of the summer, when we're still doing wells, it was tough when you get a hold of guys and the guys were still, I'm calling guys out in Manheim because I've called several people around here that said it was too steep for them, so.
But if you're gonna be brutally honest, this didn't happen in a year. This has been like this for five, seven years? Was it just this last year that you noticed that your shingles were bad? And I've noticed for the last five years that that porch is sagging and the trees growing in it. I can't imagine what the inside looks like, because nobody's been living there, but it didn't happen in a year.
I know.
So COVID can only be used for a year.
I know.
The previous four, five years before that.
I've been extremely busy.
And, and we all are, we all have jobs, we all have lives.
I don't live in this town.
And I get that, but that house is in this town.
And you guys step foot on my property, I'm already getting contacted.
I have a dead step foot on your property.
That's all I'm gonna say, if anyone goes on my property, anything happens to it, talk to the lawyer.
I have a dead foot on it, I don't need it.
End of story.
But.
Private property, I will post it, and if you trespass on it, you'll be arrested. I'll trespass everybody. That's the end of the discussion.
And that still doesn't fix the problem.
So we still need to know, Matt, what you're gonna do to address the house? Are you gonna paint it, are you gonna try to fix the porch, are you gonna make it stable? Is it, you know, just because your dad says if you pull on it, it's not gonna fall off?
I stood on the porch just before I came there. It's fine, I stood on the porch and I bounced. Only part of the bad is the little crossbars that go on there, they're rotten. I mowed the tree, those were up there temporarily, because the other ones fell down, because they were rotten. Eventually, when I get the time, I'd like to, I'm gonna replace the most of the decking and put something else on there, rather than just green trees. That's gonna be probably after June or July, because I have that whole month where I'll be on outage. And I don't have time.
Matt, I know you don't live in our community anymore, and I know you own the property, and we respect that, your, your property rights. We do get a lot of calls about complaining about it. Your dad's been kind enough to mow the weeds down that grow excessively quite often. So thank you to your dad for doing that. You know, it is, it's in rough shape.
I know, yes.
And we may just continue our process of having condemned, unless you are willing to get it taken care of.
And I will.
So what's the timeline?
Those, those are the type of things that we wanna discuss when we have a hearing like this, is establish a timeframe. This isn't the, the first opportunity like this. We've had other homes in, in the community and stuff like that, we've dealt with. We've come up with mutually agreed upon timeframes to accomplish, again, mutually agree upon items, so that we can get to the point where the property is not in a state of condemnation. And, and we've gone so far as, when the timeline came and went, the demolition occurred, and if the, if the property owner themselves did not do the demolition, the city went ahead and coordinated the demolition, and it was charged back to, to the citizen. So there, there is a whole process that, that's spelled out, and it's spelled out in, in the letters that are distributed. We, we don't, as a city, just decide that, hey, that house looks bad, send them a letter, and if, and if they don't answer that letter, we tear the house down. There's, there's a whole process that we're going through on this. So part of the discussion today is, is to establish, what is it, Matt, that, that you are going to do in detail? So that we can, if, if your intention is to get to this house to where our local inspector that's not categorized as, as a condemnation property, then, then we need to come up with what that plan is, we set a timeframe for that. You talk about being busy, everybody's busy. Everybody's busy, everybody's working, everybody's got the different restraints and stuff like that on them for, for work or whatever. So that's just part of life, and we have to work around those particular obstructions in our lives so that we can take on the responsibilities that are facing us. So that's what we need to discuss tonight. What is it in detail? You, you talked about the shingles, now you're talking about replacing the, the decking on that front porch with some other type of material. You talked about the spindles rotted and stuff like that. So we talked about that, when I'm not busy, I'm gonna get to it, but we have to be a little bit more detailed than that and establish something out on the calendar that we can mutually agree upon. And then make a determination that if that time comes and goes, what are the consequences of that? If we get to that point where, and, and you accomplished everything that you said you were going to do, then we would send our, our inspector back out there to take a look at that property. And if the state of it is now, at that time, where it's no longer a condemned site, then, then that would, that would take the matter to a different, to a different point. But that's what we have to come up with tonight, and it would be in the city minutes here as to what is mutually agreed upon, and then we'll work from there. So that's what, that's what Mr. Orenhour has been asking repeatedly, is what are you gonna do, Matt? Your responses have, you know, basically been, stay off my property or you're gonna be arrested. We're looking for cooperation here, so that we can move forward.
I know, but I can't give you a timeline until I can get time to come down here and assess it myself.
And it doesn't help us.
We meet on the first and third Mondays. Would it be, you know, we're, we're willing to work with you, Matt, and give you time.
I know, but I need to assess a property, so I can go look at it.
Great.
This is the first time I've been in Hazen since last month.
That's your choice, I understand that, that's, I understand.
I didn't, for a while I did not have the choice, I was told to stay home.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And so by our next meeting, I can speak to that, in that, clearly, Matt, that has not been, any obstruction from the company at this point here that would prevent you from stopping in Hazen between your, your plant job and your home in Mandan. It's arguably on the way to where numerous times you could, you could have been doing that.
Am I riding a van pool?
Yeah.
Or go separately tonight to make this meeting?
And, and that's all fine and well, a van pool is, is certainly something that you can, you can accommodate your responsibilities to the city of Hazen by, by using your own vehicle and, and making that route. So what I'm hearing is just a lot of excuses for a responsibility that you have for a property here in the city of Hazen. And the city of Hazen has been exceedingly patient with this property, and we've been following now a process that we go through for the potential condemnation of a property that is of concern to, to quite a number of citizens in, in this town. So we wanna get off a dead center, that's, that's the point.
Why are you just concerned with this one property? I can show you pictures of houses throughout Hazen.
And, and that's fine and right.
You gotta be fair, are you picking on Matt?
No.
About the rest of these houses, that's, that's okay.
If you, if you look at the agenda tonight, there's two properties that, that are being addressed in this particular hearing. We don't have representation here for the other property, so this is not a witch hunt for any particular individual. But when we get, when we get complaints from citizens within the city, then we, we go ahead and we respond to those.
Okay, I'm gonna term in five then, because I.
And that's your right as a citizen, Ed, no.
But I don't know if you can do that, so I'll, I'll go around the counter and I'll take pictures and I'll send them in to you, and then you can address those too. Well, and if you've read the paper or watched any of our meetings, Mr. Cretian, we, we have dealt with quite a few homes in the last couple of years, and quite a few have been removed and/or dealt with the appropriate way by the landowner. It's, it's not, it's, we're not attacking Matt Cretian or his property. It's just one of the ones that we're, that are on the list that we're working with, so.
If I were to give you a timeline, I'd say fourteen months.
By the next meeting in a month from now, Matt, I'd love to have you come back with something more than that.
Well, I'll probably assess it, that's, that's not as right to give you right now.
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I can give you for right now. So I can come down here on a weekend and crawl up on the roof and crawl, crawl up there and look. That's, that's what I can give you right now. I'm just going by looking, I'm standing on my property and looking at it.
Can I ask you why fourteen months? That sounds kind of.
What I don't wanna see is fourteen months, you come back and say, ah, sorry, guys, I haven't had an opportunity because I've been so terribly, terribly busy that I, that I couldn't stop for, for an hour or two hours in, in the city of Hazen and deal with my responsibility.
Look at it and discuss it, we might tear it down ourselves, but we don't know yet.
The point being is, fourteen months is so ambiguous, with no detail in it. What, what does fourteen months mean? At fourteen months, it, it's gonna be a new house, or in fourteen months, it's gonna be tore down? I mean, I know you say you haven't looked at it close enough to make any decisions just yet, but fourteen months, what, what are you gonna accomplish in fourteen months? That's what we're looking for, is something a little bit more concrete.
Hopefully, find a contractor to look it, I'll paint it and replace the boards on the deck.
So, so it sounds like you've already performed some evaluation on your property, so you've already got that.
Just bashed myself on my head looking at the picture and standing in front of my house. I know I need to replace the boards on the deck, I know I need the roof, and I know I need paint.
Are there any foundation issues with the map right now, or?
No.
Lauren, did you see any foundation issues?
No, I can't tell, it was all looking for the inside.
Lauren, you have a comment?
Can we ask for thirty days to assess it and come back at the next meeting next month?
And that'd be wonderful, I think, I think that's, that's what I'm looking for in particular here. Something that's a little nearer term, as opposed to just throwing a, a dart someplace out in the, in the far future. Because again, as, as was mentioned earlier, this, this is a property that, that we've received communications to the city for, for quite some time, and now we're, we're going through the official process. So if, Matt, if you're willing to, to adhere to that, I mean, it's your property, so if thirty days, we give you thirty days to, to come back to city commission with the, with an evaluation and a, a plan for what you, you want to do to the property, I think, I think that's acceptable. Can you live with that?
Yeah. Okay.
April nineteenth?
No.
So April nineteenth, if you want to record that for yourself, Matt?
Matt, is, is your name, are you the sole owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else for us, Matt, that you want to mention about the property, or? Okay. All right, well, thank you for coming, we appreciate that, and we'll hopefully see you or have some correspondence from you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving down, well, that's the end of our agenda. So the hearing, we'll conclude the hearing at this point, unless we have anybody else to speak on another property. Matt, do you?
Like I say, I did get serviced by Certified Mail and the other property owners. Do we need to do a finding pact or something in order to proceed?
Yeah, I think so, you should have Lauren Leist provide some testimony after this. The second property, yeah.
Yeah, please, Lauren, do you want to talk about the second property that's on this list?
The next one is the.
It would be 310 Fourth Avenue Northwest.
Oh, okay.
Or three, I'm three, I'm sorry, three properties.
That's the John Garrett Chantel Lace Home, 310 Fourth Avenue Northwest. Like that lime green house, yeah.
Oh, okay, over on the east side of town there, or west side?
West side of town, yeah.
Well, the overall, again, you know, I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten an inside of any of these, although, but this does, I don't know how long it's been sitting empty, but again, the roof isn't as bad a shape as some of them have been. But as you can see, the sightings in a position that would be hard to bring back, there's, it's been sitting with open windows, with no screens on, there's birds been flying in there, you know, and cats and, you know, so. Like I said, that's probably the biggest situation is, is, is open access. Anything sits open for a couple of years, I mean, you know. So you end up with a lot of bird poop and mice and rodents and things like that, and it's, and plus, you know, in, in all these cases, it creates a huge detriment to the neighbors. I mean, you know, but whatever, I know I can't go back and forth with those guys, but I'm going. So you're telling me that that would be acceptable on your house that day? And say, well, it didn't fall over, I mean, seriously? You know, whatever, you know, it's, but I shouldn't go there, but I get a little frustrated, I'm going, when you look at this, look at the pictures on this brief statement, I mean, you're gonna contest that? Are you smoking dope or what, you know, seriously? So anyway, long story short, you know, this, you know, might be more possible to rebuild it, I don't know. And if you guys can get me access to the inside of that, or some of these, oh, I'd be more than glad to go look at it. And I'll do it for, for nothing, basically, I haven't paid for the inspections. That could give you, but I don't know what the response has been on this property, how long it's been empty, is the guy gone, or is there? Because what I've done in the past, I've done, you know, quite a few condemnations, maybe fifty, sixty. And the normal process is just basically what you guys did. But you need, they need to come to you and say, this is what's gonna happen this period of time, put it on paper, and obviously, you know, if it don't happen, then it's gone. Because I've worked with dealer, and I've seen guys jerk them around for two years trying to get stuff done. Well, you have a good program that, you know, that he showed me. And, and it's just a situation in my mind that, and like you said, that's been years. And you should have said, dude, I got five other properties we can add, you know? Matt, is that, is Kurt Renter and/or individuals still living there, do you know?
There is an occupant that was served with this notice.
That lived there?
There is a person living there now within the last.
Oh, but there wasn't when I was there.
There wasn't when you.
Okay, so they get to bash it up some of the ways.
We could, we could possibly get you access to actually look at the interior of it.
Well, the, the more information I have, like I said, generally, you know, I've done quite a few of these, and really, most people don't contest it because they know it's the truth. So, but I was kind of surprised, but that's okay, and they have every right to do. Although that said, they do not have a legal right to say you can't go in the city. When you're breaking the rules, when you have all these violations, you have every right in the world to go on that property. You can't go in a property, but you should as well come walk across. But anyway, that's kind of near here and there, but I love the threat now, so. I'd like, Matt, I'd like to see if we can't get access to this particular property for Lauren. Assess the inside a little more, I mean, we all know the outside, but. Well, there's, you know, without saying, I'm, I'm making some assumptions, which I think are generally reasonable, but that said, I've got pictures of the mold and the rot and the water coming through the ceiling, I mean, you can say, well, it's fine inside. Well, there is a standard that you do have to meet to be fine inside by the law. You know, the code says a number of things, and if you got mold everywhere, or you got, you know, floor spall or a project, all these things.
That's not fine.
Yeah, on this particular property, Matt, either. Whatever that is.
So you guys delivered, delivered the letter to the, to the home, or? And I know with John being deceased, I didn't know if you had reached out to his wife, or?
Someone did actually sign for both letters.
Okay, so a letter went to, to John's home as well as.
As the property occupant.
Yes, sir. That's just south of our, where I live. And a younger guy, meaning thirty-eight, forty, moved into it. Just a heads up, he's got a rotwild, and a dog is not mean, but he plays, he'll come at, not at you, but he'll come to play with you. Cops know. At least one child in there with a small, called Tittle Mike, is aware, I don't know the people, but I seen him move it.
Well, I think, you know, generally, he knows how to communicate, just say, listen here, this is not this dude's house, so it shouldn't be an issue. But if I need a police officer or the need to say, we're going here, you need to take your dog and, and we can work.
Well, thank you for the, the intel.
Yeah, no, that's good. So you want me to shout and say, I don't know?
No, one more property.
One more, okay. Usually people are ready for me to shout and say, oh, wait, no.
We know you, Lauren.
I know. For some reason, I'm thinking you can say that.
That mobile home on Central Avenue? That's, that single mobile home.
Yeah. Who's that? What's his, I'm trying to think of his name.
Yeah, Clark, yeah. Yeah, Clark, yeah.
Yeah, there again, I mean, it's, um, well, like I said, to pull the full, speak volumes, you know, there's so much debris, you can see all this wood and stuff stacked in there and garbage in the yard, and the siding's just rotten, the roof is totally gone. In fact, there was a cat looking out the window at me when I was over there, going, hey, how you doing? You know, I'm going, you know, um, I don't know what that would, that would be scary. I mean, the soffit's falling off, the deck is gone, there's vehicles, you know, you can see, you get these wood piles and all this stuff, especially with the proximity of that field, this is only across the street from an open field. So you end up with the gophers, you end up with the rats, you end up with the raccoons, I mean, predator, vermin larger than mites, okay?
Lauren, is that, is that mold around there, or is it just rot?
Well, it's rot, and then the, the surface of the, uh, siding basically is peeled, so, but I mean, it's just rot, I mean, it's, it's to the point that the stuff, I'm sure you could push your hand or something through there. Then of course, there is holes, you know, this area, I know I saw some, where you've got cats and, and stuff crawling underneath, and it, it, it just becomes a safety issue.
Yeah, I understand that one, okay. Ten eleven Central Avenue, Mark?
Yeah, there's kind of almost interwoven, but, uh, I just, again, would you want to look at this, you know, it's just not right, I mean, there, there's so many.
I wouldn't want to try to sell my house across the street.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, and, or even be there, you know, with kids. Kids like digging around stuff that's falling apart, and it's just dangerous.
Is that, was that a fish house in the driveway?
Yeah.
Is that a shed?
No, I think it was, it looked like a fish house to me.
It was a fish house.
And there, there is somebody living in this, this house at this?
No, there, no, I'm out, and then just cats. It's, it was just almost like clones, I mean, it's, I repeated, I couldn't copy it three times because it was junk everywhere, it's, you know, and it's like, you just, you know, whatever, and I, I would be very upset if I lived across the street from that and saying.
And so is it fair to say the last two properties, we, we, we haven't received any communications back on, or?
They were finally served only two weeks ago, so they were given some time.
And, and the window of time that they're given to reply?
April first.
April first, okay.
For those two.
Well, I, I commend you guys on pushing forward this, because I hear a lot of this, you know, well, I'm as frustrated with some of it as you are too, and it's not an easy process, it's expensive process, takes forever, and sometimes people are just so busy, they can't do anything like it, so, you know, it's just not hard to do.
Okay, any questions for Lauren on the industry? Thanks, Lauren.
So we're going to throw a little items at this point, we do wait till?
Well, I think I'll just work with Pat, using the reports that Lauren said here today so we can do findings. Our would have to do findings on this so that we can properly assess and remove the abatement on this one, basically, give them notice that we're removing it on such and such a date and they'll be charged for it.
And on the Cretian property, hopefully Matt can come back with some correspondence or plan in a month. We'll go from there.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna two-year adventure here.
Okay, that brings us down to, if there's anything else that missed, down to approval
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Hack. Wolf call.
Wolf.
I.
Hack.
I.
Taylor.
I.
Stern.
All right.
Obernauer.
All right, motion to review. Before we see meeting adjourned, we'll have news, our new employee, we're starting on the nineteenth, right, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Meeting adjourned?